Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call this work session of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to order. Today is Friday, September 27, 2019. The time is 2:00 PM. And I was enjoying that moment of silence. I'll share with you our joke up here. I said, "The trains may not run on time for me, but by God, they will not run early." So, we're not early, but we also happen to be on time. We, you'll notice, again, have a full dais today. So, again, welcome Commissioner Janikah. It's good to have you here. We're also joined by Commissioner Emily Lindley, General Counsel Mary Smith, Public Interest Counsel, Executive Director, Deputy, and Farrell, who will be presenting on status and implementation issues relating to the eighty-sixth legislature. Do you have anything to add before we turn Farrell loose?
I guess I can call the first item, which is discussion of legislative issues and implementation from the eighty-sixth legislative session.
All right.
Have at it, Farrell.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Farrell Fields, and I'm the Director of the Intergovernmental Relations Division. Thank you for having me today. Happy Friday. At the last work session in April, I gave you an update on legislation that we were tracking. Now that session's over, I'm here to discuss the implementation of some of the bills that affect the agency. But first, I kind of want to give you all some stats, kind of what I'm calling session by numbers. So, as an agency, we analyze over eight hundred and forty-four bills. Of those eight hundred and forty-four bills, two hundred and ninety-three required fiscal notes. A hundred and eighty-four of those were signed by the governor, and seventy-four were filed without the signature. Of those bills, TCQ will be implementing ninety, and then thirty will be requiring rulemaking. Also, as a little side note, staff testified at over eighty hearings throughout sessions. So, we had staff as resource witnesses at over eight hundred, not eight hundred, eighty hearings. So, we had a very busy session. So, while we have a whole team downtown attending hearings and meetings, we have an entire team back at the agency analyzing all of the bills. We have a legislative assignment team, which includes ten staffers, seventy-four bill coordinators, and one hundred and ninety-six bill analysts. So, it really is an agency-wide effort to make sure that we're providing members and staff with the most current and accurate information. So, there's a lot of staff effort, a lot of hours that go into the legislative session, and each one of them were extremely helpful to all of us. I know that you all received a legislative budget update, so I just kind of wanted to highlight just a couple of key items. The first one's the Dona Canal. Current estimates for the total state share for remediation of the federal superfund site is approximately three point five million. And we, as an agency, received two million to support this share. The next item that I kind of wanted to touch on was all of our air monitoring activities.
Hey, Farrell, do you mind if I jump in and interrupt you every now and then?
Absolutely. Anytime. I would love that.
And do I need to say my name for the?
Let's do that.
Okay, Toby Baker, Executive Director. Just as a reminder, on the Dona Canal issue, there's some issues with the funding down there, and so because of that, it falls back to the state to fill that hole. And that started with a number of face-to-face meetings actually in the district with the members down there, and they did. So, I do have to give some credit to the team here, but then also to the legislative members, because I think, no pun intended, they really carried the water on helping with that local issue for us. So, kudos to them for that help. I'd like to just put that on the record.
So, mobile monitoring. For the FY twenty budget, we were funded two existing vans to be equipped with the new mass spectrometer technology capable of real-time sampling for a broad target pollutant list. So, we were also given a third van that we will, a replacement van, that will be equipped with different technology that is also capable of real-time sampling, but for a narrow pollutant list. Next, we have the Auto GCs. So, we were funded, using salary savings, three automated gas, I can't say this, chromato-
Just call it Auto GC.
Okay, I'll just call it Auto GCs. So, that will be very helpful for us. And as well, we received fifteen ultraray handheld monitors using salary savings. We also received three optical gas imaging cameras, and that was funded with unexpended balances from the PPG. I don't know if you want to kind of go diving a little more because-
Yeah, I can't help myself.
Yeah, I was going to ask a few questions, so please do.
So, I'll sort of start with the mobile monitoring was one of our original exceptional items. That obviously came out of, I think, a recognized gap that was associated with Hurricane Harvey. As you recall, we took the air monitors down so they wouldn't be destroyed by the storm. EPA had a mobile monitoring van called the Toga Vehicle that they brought in. They also used it in response to the ITC chemical fire. And so, that just further bolstered, I think, that we had that gap and we had that need. And so, that exceptional item was actually funded by the legislature during the session. And then through the ITC chemical fire, I think we recognized that we had, there were some other tools that we could go out and get, and there was an attempt at the end of session through the supplemental bill to add Auto GCs and upgrade our handheld monitoring capabilities to the ultraray technology. And unfortunately, we weren't able to make that happen during the legislative session. However, we did have salary savings available, so we just recently, with the help of, we had the ability to move on the handhelds, and so we were able to go out and get those. And what sets those apart is it allows us to speciate out benzene, which is really important when you have an event like ITC. And then the Auto GC piece was really all hands on deck here, but also downtown. We had to get approval to go after that funding, and so each of the leadership offices was involved with that, including the LBB, Lieutenant Governor, Governor's Office, Speaker's Office. And so, a lot of credit goes there for them allowing us to go out and get that. And so, we're going to have three additional Auto GCs that we're going to be able to place around the ship channel. I think that we are very well covered there now, but I think updating some of our canister samplers to Auto GCs will be helpful. And then I think there's probably two places where we could place them to really fill out that net in that heavy industrial area. So, very excited about moving with that. And then finally, we'll go back to the optical gas imaging cameras. That also was part of our original exceptional item. It did not get funded by the legislature, but we were able to find PPG money, which is Performance Partnership Grant money through EPA, I believe, to be able to go get that. So, we're going to ultimately replace three to four of those at the end of the day. Each of them run about a hundred thousand dollars. They're pretty fancy cameras. And so, at some point, we'd love to go down to the Houston area and sort of have all this stuff available for the public to see. And I don't know if we're going to let them touch the hundred thousand dollar camera, but we might set it up where they can look through it and see sort of how they work. But I think this will really go a long way in allowing us to sort of upgrade the technology that we have. I forgot to mention one thing on the handheld monitors. The other piece of that is we have been entering that data by hand, and we upgraded the software so we'll be able to do real-time uploads of the data through using the cloud to get that data up almost immediately. So, that's a huge change for us. And that actually was looking at one of the contractors during the ITC event and the equipment that they had and the technology that they had, and then taking that and bringing that inside the agency. So, I think that we really, in the last few months, have really made, I think, what I would call some huge strides in really having the capability to respond more efficiently, better going forward. And so, it's going to take a while for all of that to sort of work through the system from a funding standpoint. Obviously, we have to go out and, you know, get the equipment for the vans, get the new van. We're going to have to go through training for that. We're going to have to do the same thing with the Auto GCs. Go get that equipment, find the places to put those monitors, get trained up on all. So, it's not going to be an immediate, you know, sort of today, our capability is better than our capability was yesterday. It's going to be sort of an iterative process as far as training and getting everybody up to speed on that. But I'm pretty excited about what we've been able to do there with the money that we've sort of found under the couch cushions, so to speak. So, I think it's a really great story.
That's great. Thank you for that, Toby. Commissioner Lindley, questions?
Well, you pretty much answered. I was going to kind of ask, not specifically, but an idea of when things would be up and running, because I know it is going to take a while. But you said one thing that I also just want to comment on. I love, we all love, all this air monitoring stuff. It's awesome. It's great for everyone. And I'm thrilled that we got the money and that we've been able to find money to get more toys. That said, if moving forward, once these are all up and running, if we find that we are lacking in bodies to run all this stuff, let us know, right? That's something next session, you know, we need to be geared up for. We might not need that. I'm not saying we do. I'm just saying if, looking forward, once we have all these wonderful devices, if they can't be used, you know, in full force, and just because, you know, bodies are stretched too thin all over the state, that's something we need to know, and we can figure out how to work on that in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. We will-
I don't want to get new toys and then, you know-
Have them sit in a closet? Yes.
I don't think that will happen, for the record.
We will keep close tabs on that.
Just moving forward. But yeah, my main question was kind of when stuff would be up and running. Especially, I don't know, that last piece you said about the data, the new real-time stuff. That is really interesting. I don't think I knew a whole lot about that, and I don't have any problem with that. That's really cool. But when, how does that work? I mean, we have to go up bids for contracting? I mean, is it the regular process, like a piece of equipment? It's just software?
It's software. I think it comes with, you know, I think some sort of iPad interface, I believe, that it sort of works through. We're a little bit out of my wheelhouse right now.
That's fine.
I don't know exactly how it works. It's amazing. It flies through the air and it's invisible. So-
I understand that. Okay, thanks. Oh, I'm good.
I'll pile on just a little bit. It's important that we have a method to be deliberate about how we deploy these assets, especially the three vans that we keep them busy. And whether it's personnel, that may be a bottleneck, or any other bottleneck, we need to work through those so that they're deployed. Certainly, events like Hurricane Harvey or ITC, there's, you know, a heightened importance to have those mobilized. But even in between disasters, we have air quality monitoring needs that may be of a lower priority, but needs nevertheless to keep them deployed. I know you're sensitive to this, but I thought it bears mentioning at least.
No, and it's actually a really great point, Chairman, because we've had lots of discussions about where they should be located, how many people need to be trained on them, how do we keep people on standby? You know, so for example, the ITC fire broke out on a Sunday, and so how do we keep staff sort of on call? If something were to happen, we're immediately, they could say, hey, you have to drop what you're doing and come in and take this asset to wherever it needs to be. So, there actually is a lot that we're discussing in regards to how we prepare for those events and how we handle that from a staff perspective and a policy perspective. So, we'll probably have to do, as you know, new standard operating procedures and identify how many people can be part of that, how many it will take to do it correctly. Because as you know, the, as you all know, the ITC event went on for a long time. And so, we're talking about having assets in the field for a long time and lots of hours on certain people who are trained in those specialized assets. So, how do we balance that to make sure that we're not burning someone out or just, you know, working until they just can't function correctly? So, there's a lot going into those discussions as well.
And feeding into that, and I don't want to get too into the weeds, but we had the issue with the monitor being down during ITC, that data gap because of the calibration that was necessary. So, we'll have to, you know, figure out how to backfill that as well, which may be more of a handheld solution than a mobile monitoring. But I know you're thinking about that, but again, I think it bears repeating just to work that into the mix.
Well, let's take a hypothetical on that specific one. What this would allow us to do is take a van that has, you know, a stationary monitor essentially in it, park it there, and then still have vans moving around at the same time, which we didn't have that capability.
Thank you. Anything else on monitors?
I'll pile on very briefly. I'm still drinking out of the fire hose, so I appreciate this information. And I just want to echo a sentiment, I think, very much in line with Commissioner Lindley's, which is, as you are using the small amount of new toys we were able to locate, searching for funds elsewhere, as that may feed into a better demonstration coming around next session, please don't hesitate to ask if there's, I know you're already mindful of it, but I'll just add a kudos on recognizing the need and putting money where the mouth is. If the legislature wasn't able to provide that asset, that resource this round, getting any part of it that we can using resources available to us, I think, is a great, great move to show that initiative that helps demonstrate it later. If it does, in the legislature's opinion, really come down on a priority they want to fund, I think having a smaller footprint now to demonstrate and get that proof positive helps in the future. So, well done.
Thank you. And I'll finish the discussion on this by just, once again, I have to make it really clear that, you know, the three Auto GCs would not have happened had the leadership not given us the nod to move ahead on that. We had to go get approval from all of those offices, and they all were right on board with us. And so, that was really, you know, an effort by downtown and after the session to allow us to do that.
I'm going to add on, sorry. This wasn't supposed to turn into a little ITC talk, but I'm not sure. We've had a work session since all that. So, just to pile on what you were saying. Very, very grateful for the leadership and all of our staff who worked on that, getting us more money. And I do want to give a lot of kudos to the staff that worked the ITC fire. We haven't gotten to do that really in this kind of setting yet. You know, if we hadn't handled things as well as we handled them, we probably wouldn't have gotten the money either. And so, you know, it all fits together, and our staff that was out there, and they were from all over the state, deserves a lot of credit and a lot of kudos for the hard work they did. So, haven't gotten to really do that in a setting yet, so just say that real quick. And because of that work and because of the leadership, we got more money to get more stuff. So, grateful for all that.
Thank you. Had to echo those sentiments. Vic, you have anything to add at this point?
I don't really have much to add, but I'll just say you talked about some public outreach efforts maybe in the works whenever these things are deployed down the line, and if there's any help we can give in getting in touch with organizations or groups we work with, we're happy to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on monitors? All right, carry on.
Okay. So, I was just going to touch on one other exceptional item, and it is the eight new MSW investigators. So, these investigators will be on a three-year cycle investigating MSW landfills. As of right now, the positions that have been filled have been in the DFW region, Waco, Beaumont, San Antonio, and Corpus. So, that was a big win for us during session. So, I'm going to touch on the three legislative recommendations. I don't plan on diving into it because we've already kind of touched on that. So, the first is SB six ninety-eight, which is the expedited permitting, which authorizes TCQ to use expedited air permitting surcharges to fully fund FTEs working on expedited air permits and to support the expedited permitting program. And we received ten FTEs with that. The next one is HB twenty-nine fourteen.
Can I interrupt again? I apologize. I just want to highlight, you know, I think it's sort of related to the expedited discussion, but it's worth noting. You know, one of the things we identified through that, as you remember, sort of going through everything we went through to try to get to what our needs were, we identified that, you know, people were leaving the air permitting division within the first three years. That's really when we saw the most separations from the agency. And then on top of that, in stepping into this role, what I learned is we were also losing what I would call engineering specialists who were maybe trying to become an engineer, not finding a path to get there. And so, through this expedited discussion, what we've ended up doing is we've raised the minimum salary rates for all engineers and engineering specialists with the attempt to try to hold on to more engineers, especially for things, if you think about air permits, water permits, waste permits. So, if you think about somebody who might be sitting in a contested case hearing, providing expert testimony, if we have an engineer or engineering specialist sitting up there, I think that goes a long way. And so, but also just making us competitive, not only with our fellow state agencies, but more competitive with local governments and private industry. The ultimate goal being, if I could get, you know, another year or two out of those folks who come and work in a highly technical, complex area like air permits, you know, if we could get four or five years out of them before they decide to jump ship, that would be, I think, a game changer. So, we've raised those minimum, the minimum salaries for every level of engineers or engineering specialists. We've also put in place a recruitment bonus for engineers to come work, and we've put a retention bonus in for engineering specialists who agree to stay here for a certain amount of time. We're in the process of creating an engineering development program. So, the idea of taking folks who are working towards their professional license, becoming a professional engineer, finding a path for them to do that through the agency. Right now, we sort of do it in different areas, but it's not a sort of, it's not an agency-wide initiative. So, we're working towards that as well. So, I think that just sort of is connected because it was the expedited permit discussion that sort of led us to, you start looking into the data, and it became very clear that we had other challenges that we identified through that process. So, I wanted to make sure to just get that out there, that people were aware that that is something we've been working on as well. I apologize.
The next two legislative recommendations, which both will require rulemaking. HB twenty-nine fourteen, which will allow the ED to dissolve districts without going to the commission. And that's scheduled, the rule schedule is for winter 2019. Some of these dates are very broad, so just kind of keep that in mind. The next one is HB nineteen sixty-four, and this bill would streamline the TCQ's water rights permitting process for water right applications that will have no impact on the environment or senior water rights. So, the rule proposal is for late fall, and then the commission must adopt the rules no later than June first, 2020. So, those are the three legislative recommendations. I have a couple of other bills that I think we're just going to kind of touch on. So, if you all have any questions, the experts are all in the audience and up here. So, the first one I was going to cover is the TARP bill, which is HB thirty-seven forty-five, which extends the TARP fees under the Texas Transportation and Tax Codes until attainment effective August thirtieth, 2019. HB thirty-seven forty-five also creates the TARP Trust Fund outside of the state treasury and increases the maximum TARP appropriation for administration from eight million to sixteen million, which is effective September first, 2021. The fund will comprise the TARP fee revenue collected each biennium with any unspent funds transferred to the TARP account at the close of each biennium.
I'll jump in again. And in preparing for that, you know, I think we could be seeing up to, I think, one estimate is two hundred million additional dollars to go through the TARP grant program. I think that's great, but that comes with some challenges as well. And so, what we've done is restructure the Office of Air, and we created a new Air Grants Division. And we went to an old hand, Mike Wilson, who's been through the wringer with air permits and is used to testifying downtown, and asked him to sort of step into this new role to take on the challenge of what we're going to be looking at for the next legislative session. And so, we've split that out, and it's, you know, it's working well right now. And I think we're going to be, I think the hope is that we're well positioned for when that comes. We can seamlessly take it and move with it, and we'll have the resources that we need in place to be able to do it without leaving a whole lot of money on the table to go back into the fund.
Great. Appreciate that. Commissioner Lindley?
No questions. No, thank you.
Thanks.
This is a big deal. It's a really big deal. I mean, as we all know, the mobile, emissions from mobile sources are really the most difficult and significant driver for our ozone non-attainment areas. And TARP has been so important, and the prospect of being able to spend that much more money on it is exciting. So, it definitely comes with challenges, and Mike, we can't leave any money on the table. So, pressure's on. Thank you for that.
So, the next bill is HB twenty-seven twenty-six, and this will require rulemaking as well. And this amends existing law in the Texas Clean Air Act to allow applicants for minor NSR applications to proceed with construction at their own risk was the ED issued a draft permit that includes the permit amendment. And this bill is effective January first, 2020, and like I said before, it requires rulemaking. The next bill I'm going to cover is HB seven twenty-three, and this will require TCQ to update the water availability models for Brazos, Neches, Red, and Rio Grande River basins by December first, 2022. This will, the Water Availability Division will post a solicitation for the development of updated WAAM models for the river basins. The legislature appropriated two million for these projects for FY twenty. The Water Availability Division will also award four contracts pursuant to the solicitation and anticipates awarding them in February 2020. A stakeholder meeting was held in August, and it was also followed by a kickoff meeting earlier this month. The plan is to post the solicitation in October. The next bill I was going to cover is HB twenty-six, which is the Dam Safety Notification Bill. And this creates a dam, a Texas Dam Release Alert System to notify potentially affected persons of potential flooding due to a release of water from a dam. The implementation schedule is TCQ must complete the update to the Emergency Action Plan Guidelines by January first, 2020. Affected dam owners must submit an updated EAP by June first, 2020. The Dam Safety Program will prepare an EAP Guidelines Addendum by September first, 2019, we already gone through that, for management review. The addendum will be provided to Agency Communications by November first for publication review. The document will then be published by January first, 2020. Once the document's published, the affected dam owners will be notified of the new guidance document and the deadline to submit their updated EAPs. Have any questions on that one?
What do we know about the mechanics of the alert system? I mean, that will be described in the plans, I guess, but is that a dial-out service that people who live downstream will subscribe to, or?
I think we have Kelly Cook coming up.
Will you see if your light's on? There, thank you. Chairman, commissioners, my name's Kelly Cook. I'm Director for our TCQ Critical Infrastructure Division. We have the Dam Safety Program. So, in HB twenty-six, the mechanics of the notification are such that we'll be updating our emergency action plan for the dams. And this is for all high and significant hazard dams in the state. And so, in doing so, the update will include notification procedures in accordance with HB twenty-six, where if you have a gated dam that is either a high or a significant hazard and is also either an intermediate size or a large size. Intermediate size is a thousand acre feet. An acre foot is an acre with one foot of water on it. So, intermediate size is a thousand acre feet or a dam that's forty feet high. is 1,000 acre feet, or a dam that's 40 feet high. The large-sized dams would be a dam with either 50,000 acre feet of water behind it, or a dam that's 100 feet high. So if you meet those qualifications, then this would apply to your dam. There's 50 of those dams right now in the state. So the way the notification process will work is the dam will have to give notification to the Emergency Operations Center for the communities that are downstream that could be affected by flooding when the dam releases water through the gates for a flood operation. So if it's, if they're a flood control dam, and they release water through their gates for flood control purposes, they have to give that notification. If they're just normally releasing water for maintenance or other purposes, then they wouldn't have to. So, so once the dam operator gives a notification to the downstream Emergency Operations Center, they're responsible for notifying the public and the community that could be impacted due to the possible flooding.
By whatever mechanism they have elected to?
Yes, sir.
To use. Okay.
And the reason that we went to the Emergency Action Plan is because we already had that whole process set up for dam emergencies. So when there was a situation with a dam, you know, you have a dam that may, may fail, or something's wrong with the dam itself, this process was already in place. And so they already have those processes. They notify the sheriff's office, the local police departments, and they make those notifications go to their door, goes to the TV, the radio, and so on. And they also work with the National Weather Service River Forecast Center, which is responsible for all notifications of flooding from riverways.
Appreciate that.
I have a quick question. Er, were you finished?
For now.
Okay. So it's kind of the same question. I'll ask it kind of in two ways, but what happens if these folks don't submit their plan to the, I guess, the EAP? And then kind of on top of that, but in the same nature, what either has been happening, or what will happen moving forward with this bill if, I don't think this would ever happen, but if an entity didn't notify the local emergency planner like they were supposed to? I mean, what happens if they don't do what they're supposed to do? I guess that's kind of my question.
Well, probably two things, and they would both be the same. So if they, they don't submit their plan to us, and that has to be by, I believe, June 1st of 2020, or if they don't make that notification when they're required to, we do have the ability to enforce upon them. Our, we do not have administrative penalties under the Dam Safety Program. We would have to go to the, either go through the Attorney General's Office, but we also have the ability to take civil action through civil court if needed by way of the Attorney General's Office. And then the other would be civil lawsuits from those that may have been impacted downstream, which is currently one of the biggest hammers that is out there right now, and keeps the dam operators very attentive on making notifications and so on.
Okay. Thanks. That's helpful.
Okay.
Commissioner Janekka?
The only question I have is what, what sort of a burden do we bear when that request goes to the Emergency Operations Centers to push on a notification in compliance with this bill? I have a follow-up question depending on that answer.
The, there is no requirement for TCQ. I mean, once we've got the guidance out there, they're required to notify the, the local EOC.
Okay.
And we're asking them to notify us too, so we know. But it is, it is up to the dam owner to notify the local EOC.
That makes sense. It occurs to me that there's a potential disconnect in the strict parameters of this particular legislation, and we've got a unique piece where we're putting those requirements that then places an obligation for those dam owners to play with a different party entirely. You mentioned the requirement only applies when, as a release for flooding or flood control. If there's other releases, I could see that the public expectation upon receiving a release once, maybe we want to hear about every, every potential release or the unrelated events that they wouldn't necessarily be required to, to meet the same. I'm, I'm just curious to know if, just my background, unintended consequences are always fun when you're talking policy. I see some potential for a public expectation and strict compliance or following the law may have a disconnect where there's suddenly some EOCs reaching back saying, hey, we, the dam operators are telling us every time they're wanting to release water. We don't want the public to be mad at us. So I'm sure that's something we've given thought to, but doesn't sound like it's an issue directly affecting us, except in as much as we may hear back on the backend, but.
I, I agree with you.
That answers all the potential issues I had from what I would be worried about strictly about the, the agency.
It's always challenging to educate the, the public about what we do and how, and how we do it. And, you know, my thought is kind of the best we can do is be mindful of those challenges as we draft our guidance, and it's possible that, you know, some of what we might require or include in our guidance can serve that purpose of educating the public. I think it probably will always be imperfect, but just important to remain mindful of it. Kelly, before I let you sit down, I want to jump ahead to the next item. And, and have we solved the issue of figuring out how to reclassify dams when there are new residents moving downstream of these structures?
We're really good at reclassifying them. Keeping up with it, I guess, is, is still a significant issue. And, and the issue is that as more people move into Texas, there's more development, newer subdivisions in areas below dams, that now, maybe that dam was a significant hazard, even a low hazard. There's a lot of the factors that, that are involved in that calculation is downstream impacts if you have a dam failure. And so now that there are more people downstream, the hazard classification for that dam needs to be increased, which also comes with additional dam requirements, safety requirements that can be costly sometimes for dam owners. So still a significant issue, probably going to take a lot of money to, to get on top of that in the future, but something that we're, we have well in hand and, and doing our very, very best to keep up with.
Appreciate that.
And I think, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but adding to, there's a number of exempt dams that we just don't, we don't have any record that they even exist.
Right.
Correct. Yes.
So it sounds like we've made some, made some strides this last legislative session, but there's still some work in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And so this is the, our Emergency Action Plan Guidance that was originally created. The draft procedure was turned in by September 1st, and we will probably, we're a little ahead of schedule, and we'll probably have it over to Agency Communications here in October to get it out to folks, probably to the facilities, November, December. And they'll, they'll each get a letter from us as well. And we've had a number of dam safety workshops, and we have a conference coming up here in the future. We'll be spreading the word on as well.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from Kelly?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Farrell?
So the next bill I was going, was going to cover is the SB 700, and this is related to the regulation of certain classes of retail public water utilities. This will require rulemaking, and it will be required to implement this bill to add additional criteria to 30 Texas Administrative Code that will allow the commission or executive director to issue emergency orders to compel a retail public utility to provide water and/or sewer service to ensure safe drinking water or environmental protection, or provide an emergency interconnection for not more than 90 days. The next bill I was going to cover is HB 907, and this will require rulemaking as well. And this bill increased the fine for failure to register an APO from 10,000 to 20,000 per year. It also increased maximum penalty for an APO that has operated for three or more years without registering from 25,000 to 40,000. It also requires TCQ to investigate an APO every two years during its first six years, and then every three years. And it also increased the registration fee from $1,000 to $1,500. For the rulemaking schedule, it's proposed on or after April 2020, and it's to be adopted on or after October 2020. The next bill, which I have assistance from L'Oreal, is HB 2771, which will be transferring the permitting of produced water, hydrostatic water testing, and gas plant effluent permitting from Railroad Commission to TCQ, and it will also require TCQ to seek federal delegation. So I'll kick it over to L'Oreal now to dive a little deeper.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm L'Oreal Stepney, Deputy Director for the Office of Water. With me I have David Galindo, who's the Director for the Water Quality Division, and then Todd Gallagher, who's our Senior Attorney in the Office of Legal Services, Environmental Law Division. Thank you. So we have a presentation to share, just a few slides, to talk about HB 2771 and kind of our plan for moving forward. So Megan is going to help me with So first, starting off, we, we, as soon as the bill was passed, we formed an agency-wide team, because there's many pieces of obtaining delegation from EPA. And so we have the Office of Water, the Office of Compliance and Enforcement, we have OLS, we also have the Office of Administrative Services. Because once we get delegation, there certainly will be, even before that, there will certainly be discussions with Railroad Commission about transferring a program. And there's lots of pieces to that. So why don't we just quickly start with and overview of the rule of the bill? So the water code was amended, Chapter 26, 1.131. And basically it says, upon delegation of authority from EPA, TCQ may begin issuing these three types of permits, permits for these types of waste streams, wastewater streams, produced water, hydrostatic test water, and gas plant effluent. The deadline for us to submit the package to EPA is September 1st of 2021. And so in a, in a couple more slides, I'll show you kind of our, I'll call it our work plan for meeting that deadline. And there's a lot of different moving pieces associated with that. We can, as soon as we get delegation from EPA, the authority will transfer from us, from Railroad Commission to us. So this is an important slide, because it lays out the five major elements of a delegation package. You know, in water, we've done this most recently in, in 1998, when we got delegation for the other, the other major parts of the MPDS program for TPDS. So what David's group currently issues is wastewater permits for municipalities, industry, stormwater, concentrate animal feeding operations. And so we will be adding these portions of oil and gas categories to our agency's delegation package. So Todd was gracious enough to help us with this part of it. So one of the things that we'll need is a governor's letter. We'll have to change our existing MOA, Memorandum of Agreement with EPA. We'll have to update it for this particular part of the program. There'll be a program description that not only includes permitting functions, but it will also include enforcement functions. And Romero and Susan Jablowski have been heavily involved and working with us on the enforcement and compliance piece as well. We'll need an Attorney General Statement that outlines our legal authorities, and we will also need to submit any statutes or regulations associated with the program that we will use to implement the program. So we looked at, we've been getting questions about how long will EPA take to approve our package once it's submitted. So I wasn't in water at the time, but I know it was a number of years the last time. Hopefully it will be a shorter period of time this time. So EPA, my statute has 30 days to determine if our petition is complete. And if it's, if it is complete, then they have 90 days to approve or deny. And certainly that 90 days does not apply if they deem it incomplete. So we've also, as an aside, we've also begun discussions with EPA about what they're looking for. We reached out to my counterpart at EPA, and also Todd has reached out to his counterpart at EPA Region 6 to talk about exactly what they need. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what they're looking, maybe a sticking point that we need to overcome. The, this deadline, the 90-day deadline can be extended upon agreement between the state and the, and EPA. They have to publish notice of the petition in the federal register, and then the largest newspapers in circulation in our state. There's a comment period that's allowed for the petition. And then there's an option for a public hearing, depending on how the package is structured. And so I think I'll let Todd jump in on this one, depending on if it's a revision or...
Right. Todd Gallagher, Office of Legal Services. One of the things we're discussing with EPA right now, and that L'Oreal will discuss a little bit, is whether or not this is a partial program delegation. Depending on how EPA decides on that issue, it can either, it requires to do a full program delegation, or we can do a revision of the program that we have right now, which is the way we think, the option that we think applies. If they go with a revision, then there's not a mandatory public meeting on our delegation. It's, it's up to EPA's discretion based, based on how much public interest they think there is in that. If they think it's a, if we have to apply for a full delegation package again, there's a mandatory public meeting.
And I, I think that this is one of the critical issues. We, when we engaged EPA, their lawyers mentioned that there might be a concern that this might be considered a partial delegation, and they want to give us the whole thing. They don't want any, to delegate any more partial programs. And so they cite parts of the Clean Water Act, I believe it's Section 402N, and they believe that since we wouldn't be taking a full major category for oil and gas, the whole entire oil and gas category, we're taking three activities underneath that, that that could be considered a partial delegation. And so HB 2771 talks about activities, you know, produced water, gas plants, hydrostatic test water. EPA, in talking with Region 6, they're, they really look at things based on a SIC code basis. And so we need to reconcile both of those. We've also visited with Railroad Commission, who, who, by the way, has been great in helping us understand their processes and also the activities associated with them. Railroad also has a list of permits that they issue that are a little bit different than those three, those three activities. So we have some ideas about how maybe we can either, if our legal arguments, EPA doesn't agree with our legal arguments, maybe there's some technical ways that we can work around those issues. But it's certainly very important. And we do have one other legislative session before the deadline, if there are some legislative fixes, if we can't reach resolution with EPA. Toby, Stephanie, and I went to DC last week, September 20th, and visited with the Assistant Administrator for Water, David Ross, and we raised this issue. We also brought a letter that Toby signed outlining our legal position, which basically, as Todd said, is we already have a partial delegated, partially delegated program, and this would just be a revision. And so we don't think that part of the Clean Water Act applies. But even if it did, we are asking for authority to cover all of the activities under the agency's jurisdiction with the new legislation. And so we spelled all of that out in a letter that we've sent to and also emailed and delivered personally to EPA staff last week at headquarters. So they're going to take a look at that. They were open to working with us. But I think conceptually, they want us to take the whole thing. If there's any little pieces of, of activities or SIC codes, and there's just a small number of them, they want that to be under the entire umbrella for what the agency takes.
Do we know what those are? I know we're trying to square SIC codes with activity descriptions, but it wasn't clear to me what, what the gap was, what EPA is concerned about being left with.
Yeah. And David, maybe you can talk about the list that we got from Railroad. Because of course today, Railroad issues permits for the activity, EPA issues permits for the activity. When we get, I'll say when, when we get delegation, we'll be issuing one permit. And so we've talked to both of them about the, the difference. And so we've talked to both of them about the differences.
David Galindo, Water Quality Division. Yeah, we're still not clear exactly what waste streams there are that are out there that are being permitted by EPA that are not being covered by the Railroad Commission at this time. We're aware there's a, there's a class of waste streams, additional waste streams other than produced water that are covered under, currently under, covered under 40 CFR, Part 435. But they're mostly waste streams that are either prohibited from discharge, or they're similar to waste streams that we already permit, like domestic wastewater or stormwater runoff. So I think we'll continue discussions with EPA, Region 6, and see if we can clarify what is it that they're, they're permitting that they would like us to capture.
One of the things that we did when we were in Washington was we suggested that we have a conference call with their oil and gas expert at headquarters, and Region 6 and us, and then go line by line through the differences in the waste streams. For example, drilling fluids is on the list, drill cuttings, well completion fluids, those sorts of things. And so I think there are just a handful of the permits that EPA would issue or Railroad would issue for these types of activities. And so we don't want to hold up delegation over, you know, small amounts of, of these types of waste streams. So we're going to go through line by line and see, is there really an issue?
Right.
That we need to be worried about?
Right. Appreciate that. Questions?
I just want to be clear, is the primary objection from EPA that if they agreed outright to our request, they would be unhappy with Railroad Commission holding a piece and TCQ holding a piece, or they still have a piece and they want to give us all of it? Primarily the latter?
EPA wants to be, wants to give us all of it.
Okay.
And in order to do that, we would have to get delegation, and so Railroad wouldn't be involved in that. They want to give us everything that they issued.
Makes sense.
So here is our preliminary schedule for handling all of the activities associated with delegation. And, you know, this is our timeframe for staff, guidelines for staff, because we don't want to certainly miss the statutory deadline. But certainly if we can do these things in parallel, or some things we can get done sooner, we certainly will. First, we need to adopt the oil and gas effluent guidelines, and so we've already started that effort. It's a rulemaking effort, so it'll be a year. Then Romero's folks are going to be looking at the...
L'Oreal, is that just a straight adoption by reference, or are we going to have some, some tweaks to that, or?
Do we know yet?
Maybe we don't know yet.
We're still looking at some of the options.
Okay.
But we do have a rulemaking team that is going through and looking at all of those. And I don't think I can, I don't think it can be understated to say that Roer's processes are a little bit different than our processes, and so we're trying to blend the two, and so that's one of the things that we'll be working on, and, and being mindful of as we go through the rulemaking efforts. So we have the enforcement initiation criteria that Romero's folks are going to be looking at, and so how compliance and enforcement will be handled for these types of activities. We did get, the legislation did provide for us to get some FTEs. There's nine total, six for compliance and enforcement, three for the Office of Water. And we, Toby and Stephanie have already given us an FTE to start the, to start working on all of these efforts. So that's what we'll all be doing. The next one, I think, is a very important one, revising the hydrostatic test general permit. So currently, we have a hydrostatic general permit for the current waste streams that we have authority for at TCQ. And the largest bulk of the work, I think it was 400-plus permits are, that's about the number that Railroad issued last year for hydrostatic activities related to oil and gas. And so, and those are individual permits currently with EPA and Railroad. So what our plan is, is to update our current general permit, so that when we get delegation, people can start using it, and there won't be any gaps and, or lags in coverage, or the ability to get coverage. And so we're starting that effort in a few months. It's currently open, so that we can make sure it doesn't expire for the existing folks that we have authority for. And so when that's done, we'll start making sure that we have that covered. Railroad has to revise their MOA, I mean, their MOU with the agency, and as soon as they do, then we'll adopt it by reference, I believe. And so that's why there's a staggered timeframe up there for that. And then, of course, developing the package, the program description, and everything else that goes into the petition to EPA. We're also going to have to revise our MOA with EPA and add these activities, probably change it from TNRCC to TCQ as well. We'll just throw that one in there. And then we also put time in there for the Attorney General to write, you know, the opinion for the package, the governor's letter, and then submit the application. We gave ourselves about three month window, just in case something happens before the statutory deadline ends. So our goal is to be done by the end of May, May 31st, or sooner. If we can get it done sooner, we certainly will. So I think those are the highlights. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions?
Just one kind of clarification. So when you were talking about the hydrostatic, revising the hydrostatic test general permit, a very simple explanation, is it that we, we don't want to open that yet because it would affect the people that currently have those permits? Is that what you're saying? I mean, that's why we're waiting until January to start it?
It's already open.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to finish it up, but we're going to be working, we just hired someone new, that we're going to have him start working on the oil and gas piece of it. But then we'll, the proposal won't come until after we've, the commission has adopted this version of it.
So it can't be included in what's open? And maybe that's a question for legal?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't want to risk not having authority for the folks that were currently covered under the general.
Okay. That helps things. I don't really have any other questions. The only thing I would, I know Chairman and I, and our newest commissioner will be engaged on as well, but we've, we've been engaged on this. We've been talking about it with, for a couple months, you know, when the legislature was meeting and stuff, and, you know, it's really important that we get this right. So I don't want to rush things and something get botched along the way, but it is important that we, that we get this done as, as quickly as possible for a number of reasons in my mind. So if there's things, you know, we need to make sure that things are moving while we're having conversations with EPA, and I know that's hard to do, but what I think we're all committed to doing is helping in any way we can, right? I'm happy to pick up the phone, call headquarters, call Region 6. I'm not saying they'll, might not answer my phone call, but I will pick up the phone and call. But we're happy to do our part. So if there's, you know, if you can't get a conference call scheduled with Region 6 and headquarters and y'all for a couple weeks, let us know that, because we, we'll get on that, right? We'll try and help speed things up wherever we can. That way you can keep moving the other pieces. So any place we can step in and help, we want to do that, because this bill's, it's, I don't want to get the program wrong, but I do think it's appropriate that it be at our agency for us to run. So I'll just say that.
Thank you for that. Other questions? Stephanie?
If I may, it's not a question, but it's, and this is, all the deputies have their issues that they work in very diligently, but a round of applause for L'Oreal. It was like she was preparing for a series of college exams for our trip to DC last week. So it was this topic, and then several others, in addition to one area issue that we discussed. But L'Oreal, ragging on her, she did a phenomenal job, with the support of her staff.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, L'Oreal.
It was like a college exam, like 10 of them. You should have seen my office.
This bill will take a village, there's no doubt, so.
It was, it was a tall order she covered, I mean, not, again, she covered a variety of issues that I could come in and backfill some on, not, not as fluent on this particular bill, but on some of the other issues, I was trying to provide support along with Toby, but she did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Hi, I want to voice my strong agreement with Commissioner Lindley's statement that this is something that certainly needs to move with as much urgency as we can, and I'm curious about the, the additional, I don't think you know the answer to this yet, but as you continue the conversation with EPA on exactly what other pieces they're interested in pushing to avoid a partial delegation, one question that seems imperative to answer quickly for me is, will that, would seeking that additional delegation require direction from the, from the state for TCQ to do so? Or is that something that we could, we could request? In this timeline, we could shift and modify, make sure that leadership is aware of what changes we need to make in order to make sure EPA will be more positioned to say yes at the end. I'd be very concerned if, if we dig in and say, okay, good, we've got the legislative session coming again, and they'll give, that'll give the legislature a chance to give us better direction. Well, if we've already gone too far down the road of our authorization from this, this bill is pretty narrowly, narrowly drafted, it may be a potential collision course, where we've invested time, resources, and effort, and now it comes to a stop, and a rough stop when the legislature gives us that necessary authorization next session. So that's something that I think would, could potentially gum up the works if, if further delegation is necessary. That might be an easy answer, based off of the statute we're now implementing, or it may be something that will just require some thought as we learn what EPA wants to give us.
I think one of the things that we're, I'm sorry.
Let me chime in real quick. I think it's still an open question, whether we have sufficient statutory authority to do everything that EPA would want us to do. I think that we'll have that question answered in relatively short order. And then maybe if you could speak to how the next, if we do need to seek additional authority from the legislature in order to, to, to go forward with, with this rule package, how would that fit into the timeline?
Two things. First, we have some ideas. I won't take credit for this, this was David's idea. We're looking at whether produced water can cover all these other little terms.
Right.
Terms of art. It's not defined in our statute, I don't believe. And so David's, David's idea was, is it already broad enough to do what we needed to do and satisfy EPA? So we're, we're looking at it from the legal avenue. You know, this really isn't a partial delegation, it's a revision. We're also looking at it from the technical avenue, and that's one of the reasons that we want to have the discussion with our oil and gas group, so we can make them understand, so we don't get hung up on this. Okay, that's the first thing. And then secondly, I think what we would have to do, Chairman, if, if it does come down to the next legislative session, we would have to identify this for leadership when we're doing our, our legislative recommendation process before that. And make visits downtown to explain why this is important, and in order for us to make it all happen, and happen quickly, so that by the end of May, we can put everything in the mail. We just need to attach the new legislation, probably tie off with the Attorney General, because they'd have to say that we have enough statutory authority to do this. And then get it in the mail by June, or sooner, whatever the case might be, if we have to do that. So I think we would start talking as soon as we know that EPA is, hopefully this won't happen, is, is not moving all of their position.
Yeah, and I, let me stress, I think this is very much a contingency plan, several, several steps down. It's not even Plan C or D, maybe. We're going to try to find a way to close the gap, short of additional authority from the legislature. But anyway, I think we'll be able to work through those issues.
And I'm happy to drive it up there, if that would be faster. I don't know if it would be, but.
Hey, you drone.
Oh, Lord. Thank you.
Anything else on produced waters? Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
So I saved the best for last, so that, that's all I had to cover.
Colleagues, any observations or comments, or?
No, just, looks like we'll have fun doing some rulemakings over the next couple of months, 30 of them, I guess. Thank you all.
Well, closing, maybe where Farrell began, the by the numbers, is just a reminder at the tremendous amount of effort that goes into legislative sessions every single time. So thanks, Farrell, to you and your staff, and thanks for everybody in the programs who supported that. I know it's a tremendous amount of work. Let me also say that, one of the reasons I like work, the work sessions is, because I'm sitting down here on the floor, and many of you don't attend the agendas, I'm sure for very good reasons, and those, those of you who do are sitting in the back of the room, so I don't get to see your faces so much, but it's, it's just a physical reminder for me of, of the wonderful leadership that we have working at this agency. And I know behind each one of you, you know, there are legions of other really outstanding TCQ employees, so it's, it's inspiring. I enjoy this, and thank you so much for everything you do.
I second that. I don't know if that was a motion?
That was a motion.
I have to throw that one. I've been thinking that the entire time that I've been behind the dais. All one of them.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. I think we're done. Do you have anything to add?
I would just add that item number two is, is for executive meeting, closed session, and there will not be a closed session after this work session.
So the time is 3:06, and we are adjourned.